I hadn't called the meeting of the regular meeting of the city council for November tenth to order. Everyone please rise and recite the pledge. All right, and next up we have two winners for our city council seats. We have Pam Conley with six hundred and six votes and Renee Race with five hundred and eighty-eight. If you would both please rise and I'll issue your oath.
I Pamela Conley and I Renee Race do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge our duties of city councillor to the best of my abilities.
I do.
Yes, I just, I woke up from a power nap, but not soon enough, so I'm.
All right. The moment to take care of that.
You need to hand it back or at the end of the meeting?
Now would be good.
Now would be good.
That is good.
Very well, it's good.
Thank you. And next I will open the floor for nominations for mayor. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Pam Con.
Pam Conley for mayor.
I'll support that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote for Pam Conley as mayor. We have Miss. Miss Atchison is absent. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Molly Nixon?
Yes.
Rose Powell?
Yes.
Renee Race?
Yes.
And Pam Conley.
Yes. We told them you were coming. Breathe. It's okay.
All right Pam, one more time.
Yes.
I Pam Conley do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Madam Mayor, council person.
Yes. And take a hot second and breathe and I will sign this. Hello. Do I need to, I don't need a date, right?
No.
Because the date's on the top. We need to add the library appointments to the agenda?
Probably when we get to that point.
Okay. Is there one? Okay. We had, Mark's was like stuck in Mike's folder. He couldn't find it, so. All right. You good?
Good.
At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for mayor pro. Do I need to, I don't need to get, we're gavelled in. I will open the nominations for mayor pro temp.
I'll nominate Molly Nixon.
I would second that nomination. All those in favor, let's, well, let's do a roll call. Miss Atchison? Yes. Oh, are there, I'm sorry, are there any other nominations? Okay. Do I need discussion on this? Okay. Miss Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Miss Hamel is absent. Ms. Nixon?
My honor to serve, yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. And Ms. Race?
Yes.
You're not, I'm sorry, the roll call isn't, you're not on my list because we have two lines.
Oh, yeah.
For you and me.
Empty.
Right? Because we didn't know for sure we were going to be, even though we were the only people running.
There were, I believe, three write-ins.
Okay. Was it close?
I Molly Nixon do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor pro temp to the best of my abilities.
I will.
All right, moving on. Public, oh, we'll give you a hot minute. Hey, public comments. You good? The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment. In public hearing portions of the agenda, however, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the council, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a written response. Do I have anyone who would like to speak? We would love to hear from you and I just have to say, I absolutely love that scarf.
Kami Crumhow, Cedar Springs Public Library. So, this is what happened during the month of October at your library. There was a. So, on October seventh, I thought I'd break it out for you this evening so you could kind of see maybe week by week. For storytimes, on the seventh, we had twenty-four kids, twenty-four adults. On the fourteenth, twenty-seven kids, nineteen adults. On the twenty-first, twenty-three kids and twelve adults. And on the twenty-eighth, thirty-eight kids and thirty-four adults. That was our storytime trick-or-treat. We had, on the eleventh, we had a toddler sensory bin program. We had thirteen kids and nine adults. We have twenty zero to five.
Wow.
For fall bingo.
That's a lot of zero to five.
So, elementary kids, six to eleven, we have twenty-two participants for the fall bingo. We had a mini art prize for teens and tweens. We had three participants and we have six for fall bingo. We had an Halloween eye spy where it's a little aquarium. They have a little list. They come in and find their. Their objects, we had a hundred and eighty-four do that.
Wow.
We had a scavenger hunt going on. We had twenty-one participants. Now, this is just for the month of October. For adult programs, we had our writers group. There were four in attendance, book club, eight in attendance. There were twenty-six blood drive donors. At the fabric art, we had fifty-one in attendance. And we have a new fitness, enhanced fitness that is designed for the fifty-five plus. And that meets Tuesdays and Thursdays. And for the very first month, we had a hundred and twenty-seven attendees. That's huge. We, they've been having from twenty to twenty-one people come twice a week, so.
Still feels like a lot.
It's a lot. It's a lot. CTA came and visited and there were eighty-eight students and six adults on the nineteenth.
Wow.
And I just want to tell you about some upcoming things at the library. We are having a fall craft show on the nineteenth. It is a Saturday. We are having a special storytime. Miss USA Teen Michigan, former red flannel queen will be there reading her book.
Oh, she has the book?
She has a book. She will be there reading her book. There's two storytimes that day. We have a literary themed gingerbread house contest going on. There are three age groups. Drop-off is between November twenty-first and December second. We are having our big holiday open house on the third of December and it is a toy story holiday. So, make sure you have those things on your calendar. We are also, we do have our board positions filled. However, our Friends of the Library group would love to have some more friends. So, if you know anyone who would like to be a friend of the library, there are many opportunities to serve the library in that way and in that capacity. And there's leadership roles available on that as well.
How would one go about, do you have a place on your website?
Yes. Yes, yes and yes. Or send us a message on Facebook or call us. Send us an email.
Are there specific jobs you're looking for?
There are board positions open, trustee positions open. And just if you wanted to be a friend through your treasures, that would be lovely as well. So, time tail and treasurer are all welcome.
Hey.
Hi. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, I had the pleasure of attending the last library board meeting with the person that we are, you're going to have for you tonight to. Appoint to the library board. And Kami is just doing an amazing job. And yes, she had big shoes to fill with Donna, but it is phenomenal what she's doing there. So, I want to, and I have checked out, I just saw, and I mostly do ebooks, but I think I've checked out fifty-four books for the library, just me, not my kid or my husband. So, since January first, so that's sort of a thing. So, thank you for those services. All right, moving, oh, anyone else? Any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, we do have our auditor here.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Looks like a bunch of employees. Would like to get into our audit report?
Um, was there anybody else that wanted to talk?
A public comment, you guys were kind of like going back and forth, so I didn't know if you were or not.
And don't we need to adopt the agenda before we do? I'm not trying to cut you off, but don't we need to adopt the agenda before we head into our auditor's report?
And if you want, it's listed here in public comments, but you can do whatever you want.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right here.
So, go right ahead. Sorry.
My name is Christopher Conflitty and I'm thankful that we're very close on our multifamily issue with the affidavit. I think we're going to discuss that a little bit tonight and hopefully finish that up for everybody. So, that's a major step for me personally for repairing the fire damaged home at sixty-seven East Beach. So, we, I did meet with the city manager. So, if we can get the multifamily affidavit checked off with the zoning issue, then I did get a verbal that we, I will be able to move forward in repairing the home that, that we've been trying, that we want to get done. So, the city does have the permit, building permit with the, with the B associated with that. So, I just want to let you guys know that's on the table and that should be good for everybody to get, get that thing moving and repaired. But there is a. I do, am I going to need some type of extension on anything for my one-year deadline? Because that was January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any idea?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Sure, that would be lovely.
So, first of all, I'm not entirely sure all those things that you indicated were dreadful statements. But, you know, as zoning administrator, I sent out the affidavit early this week, late last week with the expectation that they'd be filled out and submitted already. I don't know what you guys are doing here at this meeting expecting the city council to discuss the issue. It's not even on the agenda.
My, my understanding, just to clarify, and I wasn't at the meeting with Ashley and Rose, but I thought we were pretty much there.
I think we, I think we are pretty much there. It was just a couple of word, little verbiage changes that.
My understanding was per the last meeting that that was going to be managed person by person with the zoning administrator.
Out multiple emails to every single landlord in town. I've received responses back. I've also had sit-down meetings with a couple of the landlords on an individual basis. As far as I'm concerned and aware, the affidavit should be complete and final. And I sent it out to the landlords requesting them to start filling it out with the, I mean, it's two minor things that they have to submit in addition to that. And we can start signing off on this.
And that was my understanding, having, you know, because the manager said to me, do you feel comfortable with this? And I said, I wasn't at the meeting, but if, if councillor Powell and. And councillor Hamel felt fine with it because they were the ones who were our representatives at that meeting. And he told me that he spoke with you and you felt like we were there.
And so did the landlords, as far as I knew.
Right, that was my understanding.
Sounds great. I just didn't know if the city council had to approve the, the final version.
We did that.
Okay. Okay.
We, we gave.
Madam Mayor, you, you approved of the policy.
Right, we, we gave the consent to the zoning administrator to make any final tweaks that had to be done. No.
Good to go.
All good, that clarifies, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. You good? All right, anyone else? Sure.
Any crank right, eighty seventy seventeen mile road. It is on the agenda under GHI, final affidavit of lawful non-conforming property. I guess I misunderstood as well. I thought it had to come back for final approval from city council to.
Nope.
Be resolved, so.
It's under communications.
Right. Right.
My misunderstanding, so. And nice, nice job Lisa on the mayor's haircut or the city manager's haircut.
Yes, he looks very handsome. Less scruffy, right? All right, are we good? Anything else?
Dan Spitzbergen, P.O. Box forty-two, Cedar Springs. And I just wanted to thank the council and the representatives from the council that met with us and hammered out the items that we had issues and misunderstandings about. And I think we're, I think we're where we want to be. So, thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you councillor Powell and in essenceia councillor Hamel for doing the sit-down on that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, at this time then, we should do our audit. Okay. Come on down.
Let's do the audit.
Let's do it so you don't have to stick around. As exciting as we are to hang out with on a random Thursday night.
The exciting part of your meeting, I'm sure.
It always is.
Thank you. See Darla was online, so I can't say anything too bad about her, but she does a good job.
An amazing job.
Putting into this. One thing that was kind of a big change for this year was that the new chart of accounts was put into place as required by Michigan. So, there was a lot of work into that and we had to kind of revamp some things and so forth. You'll never see it on this financial statements, but it takes a little bit more, more work, but no problem. So, first on page one, do you have the audit book in front of you, I hope?
I do.
Page one is the independent auditor's report. That's where the opinion on the financial statement is. It's laid out much differently this year than it has been in past years because there were some new standards put into place for, for how we have to report. But the opinion now is right at the very top of page one. And it says in our opinion, the statements apparently in all material respects the financial position of the city. And the other things that it did, that are included now in this audit, independent auditor's report are a little bit more detail on what we do. Kind of on the second page, plus there's some consideration of a going concern. A going concern means that we expect the city will still be in business one year from the date of issue.
That's good to know.
Yeah. So, that, it'd be really rare to have any issues with that at a governmental unit unless there was, for example, a tax, a voted tax mileage that was going to expire, for example, on an authority or that kind of thing. Pages three through eight, as you kind of page through it, are the management's discussion and analysis. Mostly just some verbal information or not number stuff so much, but the financial highlights right at the top of page three are where the, the big exciting things going on are, are displayed. You know, the, the bridge work up the street here and the extension, utility extension on West Street and that kind of thing are, are just mentioned here. I won't spend too much time on here, but then getting into the numbers, pages nine through eleven are the government-wide financial statements. These financial statements include all of the capital assets and the related debt and everything of the. Of the city. And down at the bottom of page nine, you can see the second line from the bottom is unrestricted net position. And that's a positive number for the governmental activities of one point six million. It's, it's almost rare that you see even a positive number there at most communities because of the recording of the net pension liability. But the city's net pension liability is, is not super high. It's about five hundred and fifty thousand, so you're in really good shape there and it's pretty rare to see a positive number. And then just a couple slides on, on those pages. This is just kind of in the governmental activities. Where does the revenue come from? And you can see it's fifty-six percent from property taxes, eleven percent charges for services, eighteen percent operating grants, which includes your Act fifty-one street funding and that kind of thing. And then state shared revenues, about fourteen percent of your all revenue.
Oh, don't get me started.
You want it higher?
Do, well, do you think that it's likely to change with the new legislature? That we might go back to like.
Wish I could predict, I haven't. I was surprised that it didn't drop off. It stayed pretty much the same and actually went up.
Here, yeah.
I guess yours, yeah. So, I'm, I'm surprised with the whole COVID and all that stuff that it actually stayed at least the same and up.
Right.
I was expecting it would go down from that in the future, who knows? We hope it'll stay the same at least. And then the second, this is just kind of a picture of the information on pages ten and eleven. But this is the, and it shows you your expenses compared to direct or program revenues, which are the charges for services and operating grants primarily. So, you can see the, the difference, some, most of them have higher expenses than program revenues. That's where the property tax and state shared revenue goes. And that's, that's what it's being used to fund. You see one kind of oddity there is the program revenues for the streets exceed the expenses. And that's just based on.
Grants.
Yes, it's the Act fifty-one money that exceeds the, the remaining expenses in that particular function. Okay, then pages twelve through fifteen are more the fund basis financial statements. These are what you, you see. The same basis that you would see normally at the council meetings where, where Darla presents financial information to you. But just on page twelve, right on the left-hand column is the general fund. And you can see near the bottom of the page there, the unassigned. Fund balance is one point five million, so that's in good shape. And I have a few slides here that I'll show you. But overall, in very good shape. I was going to point out the library since she's here, but that's way back on page forty-three. And, and the library is, has a fund balance of about two hundred and sixty thousand, which is good. It's down just a little bit from the previous year. And that, I didn't do any comparison or anything like that, but that was just for you. But it's, it's also in, in good shape. Just so the general fund, you can see this is a little history of the last six years of revenues in the general fund. And property taxes have gone steadily up with values increasing. And you can see there, the, that middle group is the state shared revenue. And you can see it's been up.
Picking up a little.
Couple of years, yeah. And other is, it's just a catch-all for everything else. I believe last year there was a federal grant received, which caused last year's other category to spike up a little bit there. And then this is the property tax revenues, a little bit longer history of it with the last ten years or so that are there. And you can see again, it's steadily increased. And this is the expenditures by the various functional areas within the general fund. You can see general fund, general government, which is all this administration and that kind of thing is pretty steady. Public safety is up just slightly. Public works is up. And that consists of a drain assessment and street lighting. So, street lighting is more expensive and they were, they were budgeted to be up like this. And nothing unexpected there. And then this is your fund balance that I just mentioned, one point five million as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. And you can see that's kind of bumped up and down over the last several years, but always staying above sixty percent and just below ninety percent this year. So, that's, I don't recall if you guys have a policy of where to keep it, but most communities keep it around twenty-five percent as a minimum, twenty percent. So, you're well above your minimum, so.
We've had several things, projects that we've put money away for.
Yep, yep, there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's good. I don't remember what's next. Okay, the proprietary funds, our pages sixteen through eighteen, just the water and sewer fund. They'll concentrate on the slides here. They're both doing well. The, you can see the yellow bar, there is the change in net position or the increase in net position. That's the sewer, here's the water. So, they're both in good shape. The other important thing we look at in this, these funds are the cash flows because there is depreciation and that kind of thing going on here. But cash in the sewer fund increased about three hundred thousand and about two hundred and forty thousand in the water fund. So, they're both, both a good increase in cash. And cash at the, at the end of the year, you're over one and a half million in each of the funds. So, they're in decent shape as well. Then just by way of a couple footnotes, you did issue new debt this year, which you can see on page thirty. Just a, a small loan of about four hundred and fifty thousand was issued, a small bond issue. And other than that, the bonds have been getting paid off over the last many years. And then, I think that, that's my last slide. And way at the back of the book, page forty-nine, because you have outstanding USDA debt, we have to do this in accordance with government auditing standards was, is just a little bit expansion of the scope of a normal audit. But we issue internal control over financial reporting and, and compliance and other matters in this report. So, if there were any significant issues, we would report those to you here and they're, they weren't intended to report. So, that means we looked at, at the controls a little closer. We look at the compliance and we report on those here. All in all, a very good report and. Nothing negative to say.
I could just add one minor thing. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that bond, that was for the West Street project with the intention to pay it back if we solve it.
Thank you.
And I had asked previously if there was any additional payout we have to do on the bridge and you said you didn't think so.
So, if that's a quickly spread away.
And then I, I do have a clarifying question on the water and sewer funds. So, I, I see that according to the graph that you provided, our revenues are outpacing our expenditures. Does that take into account the depreciation that all, that all the equipment has? So, even, okay.
It, it does, so that really shows that you're covering your depreciation.
Okay.
And adding to the cash.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
It doesn't denotate specific earmark sections that we have for improvements. Like, like we got to do a roof, right?
Well. Well, there will be a well, which is a whole other.
If you want to look at page sixteen on your, your report, that's the proprietary fund statement in that position. Right at the bottom of the page, you can see of your net position of about six point seven million in the sewer fund, there's really only available about one point seven million because there's other amounts are set aside and restricted for debt service unless you have four point four million tied up in capital assets.
Sure.
Yeah, the actual water treatment plant is a.
Yeah.
Is the thing. It's in.
It is, and it's.
Worth money.
And it's, it's not uncommon to need a five hundred thousand dollar fix. So.
Yeah.
Pretty much anything costs that.
Yeah.
In those funds, yeah.
Okay.
One thing you would see in every year's budget for water and sewers and amortization costs, that we take every piece of pipe that's in the ground and we say, well, this'll last fifty years. So, at the end of fifty years, we're going to have to replace it. So, all of our assets we have, we have in amortization costs that we plug in there, which is part of the saving cash that you see in this audit. So, that, you know, we don't actually spend it. It's just something that we're setting aside each year.
Because we know we will need to fix it.
Right. Right. That's where I was saying, like, we know we're gonna need a roof and we know we're gonna need a pump and we know we're gonna need and so much of the equipment is proprietary.
Sure, you can buy it from one person so that or one company.
So like in the world.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, you know, if they don't actually sell that.
So when I say you're covering your depreciation in that fund, that's exactly what you saw.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's and water's a big deal. Especially here in West Michigan and I'm Flint.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any specific questions for Mr. Riddell?
Anything else would be happy.
I don't. Is anyone on the council? If you do.
Just my compliments and on on our Darla Falcon doing such a wonderful job and working with you guys.
Appreciate it.
We see every year there's a new thing and a new law and a new regulation and Never ceases to amaze me, you know, when is it gonna be okay for a year or two, but
We we just hope maybe for a year or two.
And she is always on top of it and makes it palatable for us to understand In a way that for those of us who don't have finance degrees. And you have been doing this. How long have you been our auditor?
A few years. I don't.
Fifteen, twenty?
And that's twenty. I don't know if it's quite fifteen yet, but yeah, we're getting there.
For a while. So thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I mean, one thing I'm always amused by when we get this audit is you never see the people saying, well, where's that slush fund?
Right.
Always accused of having.
I mean, we have, we have a relatively healthy fund balance, which is nice.
You have a very healthy.
Supposed to, yeah.
But we we also have a lot of big projects that are expensive.
So one of the reasons we've been ramping up our fund balance over the years is because we have a Three hundred thousand dollar grant for the pocket park. We have another three hundred plus thousand dollar grant for the Harvester Springs playground. You know.
We had a bridge.
We had a very, very expensive bridge. There's a lot of things that I think the city was not able to accomplish in many years past because they didn't have the matching funds for the grants. So when I started this job, you guys said, well, we want to get grants. Well, grants are great, but you gotta have the matching funds.
Correct.
Now that we have the matching funds, we're able to get these grants that you guys wanted to see.
And that has been, in my estimation, absolutely game changing for this community. From being able to just like keep the lights on To actually moving us forward with things like fixing our roads, adding our sidewalks, Expanding our parks, developing our parks. That's been huge. So I greatly appreciate that we have gotten to that place. All right, moving on. We don't have any public hearings, correct? Adam Clark, Mr. Manager. So the adoption of the agenda. Do we need to add The library board?
You would need to add the appointment of The second library board position. The question would be for you, whether you want to put it into consent, action, discussion.
Um, I would just like to talk briefly about both of them because this is a big deal. We've had Two people retire from the library board and I would also like to invite them To come in and receive our appreciation and we would give some, you know, out some certificates for Thanking them for. I know Becky Powell has served for a very long time. I don't even Um, I would also gladly go and give them Those same accolades at a library board meeting if it were easy. I know they've Retired, but if that were easier than coming here and we can, we can mail them, but Because I would be thrilled to do that. And say, thank you for that service. And then the two people that we have found are Heidi Amok, Armok. I think I'm saying her her last name correctly, Armok. And she is a librarian. She is a school librarian for Greenville Public Schools. And I was just thrilled when I found her and she lives here in Cedar Springs and has Kids here in the school system and said, yeah, I could do that. I could be on the library board. Right, right. I hear they're big fans of Miss Melissa. That's what I hear. And then Heidi pointed me to Matt Mark. Let me find his form here. And I spoke with him on the phone with Mark Dykstra. And Mark Dykstra is also an educator. He is a science teacher for Greenwich Central. And lives here in town and has two kids who live part time in Rockford, part time here in Cedar Springs. His spouse, His former spouse is in Rockford, so his kids go back and forth. But He is very excited to be on the library board and also a Big advocate for education and books. And I said I will For their kids, I would also be very willing to make a ceremony out of swearing them in if it's helpful. So I know we can, you can just, but we can make a thing out of it. And yeah, I'm very excited about this.
Madam Mayor, if you think the board's comfortable with the appointment of Mr. Dykstra tonight, would you like to add that as item six F?
On the consent agenda?
Do you? Yes, no, straw poll?
I I'd approve it.
Are we okay with adding that to the consent agenda? Okay, that's what we'll do.
So Madam Conley, are you looking for a motion to approve the agenda with that modification?
I am.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Anything you want off the consent agenda?
No. I'm just, I'm just so happy to get these library board now.
Right? Me too. Yes. Yes. And so now we are We're adopting the agenda. I took kind of a straw poll of this. Everyone, do you want an actual motion to put that on the consent agenda? Okay, we're gonna put it under the consent agenda.
Six F.
Six F. And then we're going to, there's a motion and a second on the table to approve the agenda with that addition. Right? So any discussion? Okay, uh, I'll do a roll call. I have a lot of papers here. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. And if I'm on the border tonight, it's because our names are at the bottom, so I apologize. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda or requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member And does not require the support of other council members.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? And I, Ms. Powell, when I ask you, I'm not signaling you out. I just know you frequently have something you would like to talk about.
Happy with the whole.
And I appreciate that about you. All right, the motion has been made and seconded. There's no discussion. Uh, Mr. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. I would also at this time take a motion to excuse Ms. Hamel.
I would make the motion to excuse Ms. Hamel.
Support. Any discussion? I hope everything's okay.
I got a text message from her saying that she was not feeling well.
Okay, I hope she's not super unwell.
And then there, I I didn't hear a second on the consent.
So um, we wish Ms. Hamel well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Ms. Race or Ms. Hamel is excused. Moving on to It's making some agenda. Going to move my library board appointments out of my agenda. Okay. Moving on to action items. Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash nineteen, a resolution to approve regular meeting dates of the city council from January twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty three. Motion to approve Cedar Springs. Oh, wait, sorry. That's all part of that motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty two nineteen, a resolution to approve the regular meeting dates of the city council from January twenty third Through December twenty third.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, the only change in there is you'll see, I think, is in February, I'm attending a meeting in Mount Pleasant that day, so I would ask that we move to next week. Other than that, it's a second Thursday every other month.
I see that on our packet that start and it says February sixteenth. So that is the date that we are moving to?
If so.
Mm hmm. Okay. Very good.
Then you get to dodge one of my ugly Valentine sweaters. Valentine's will be over.
Wear it anyway.
I could wear it anyway. This is true. This is true. Uh, all right, duh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have a schedule. Moving on to item B, motion to approve Cedar Springs Public Library Holiday Open House, December third, twenty twenty two, nine to two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Amy, anything to tell us about it? Woo!
So if you saw an early draft of this, there was no train, but
Is this the tree lighting with Santa? Chamber. But is it the same date? Okay.
So the libraries will be opening and then they'll be starting with Comes and movies. Then they'll be displaying, organizing and
Okay. Would would Santa like an escort again from the mayor? Okay, I can talk directly to Santa. I've spoke to Santa in the past, but I did do that in the in the past. And I will do that if it's helpful. So Okay, moving on then. So while we, I guess we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have a wonderful holiday open house. Looking forward to it. Uh, discussion items, discussion of West Street land sales.
So the city has finished its West Street project. Um, and I don't know if we'll get the opportunity to do a ribbon cutting because it's supposed to be very, very cold starting this week.
If if it's helpful for you, tell me when and where.
More of a trying to get everybody because there's a lot of parties on that project.
It's just if you need it, you'd said previously that you thought it might be useful for the marketing piece of it. And if you and I and I'll drag someone with the camera, if that's helpful, I will do that.
Uh, but uh, what we're discussing today is the actual land sale. So We've got approximately fifty five, sixty acres out there for sale. Uh, this would go towards paying back the bond that was issued this year and then the rest would be On money that could be put towards other projects in the community.
Big sidewalks and roads and wells.
So we have been approached already by a proposed purchaser of the property. Um, and not having anything in place, I went to the mayor and discussed the issue with her and we decided to Um, counter propose because the, in my opinion, I think the mayor's opinion, uh, the offered
Is a little low.
Is a little low. So what I'm looking for is just, I guess, a thumbs up or down whether you like that process now. The city cannot and will not sell the land without getting council approved. But uh, there are negotiations that occur before we get to that point. Um, and I just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with, you know, me being the point person and then discussing that with the mayor Uh, to make sure that, you know, politically speaking, she thinks it's a comfortable thing that to take to council or not. Uh, because the other option is potentially that every single offer comes to the city council.
And of course, we either have to have special meetings or
Or they wait.
Or they wait.
So that's what I'm looking for.
So do you all feel, and I can um
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yes.
Based on the emails that we received. I would tend to agree with both mayor and the city manager on the On the value of the property versus the offer. Uh, I don't feel that the The other option as far as the percentage Would be too far off. Uh, and I think it'd be fine for them to kind of follow through on that same track. I don't know if all of you read the emails or not, but uh, it was, it was I would agree. The first one was far too low based on the appraised value of the properties. So
Are you comfortable with the city manager's office kind of leading the initial negotiation?
That is correct.
Speaking with the mayor about it to make sure.
That is correct.
If it's an acceptable offer, we would then take it to the city council at a formal meeting.
Yes, sir.
Which of course the city council could accept or not accept if you feel that it's still not what it should be.
Of course, you guys know that wherever possible, I still try to at least loop you in by email. Not a formal
And and with that having been said, it has got to be consistent. Because we don't want to make it appear that one got a priority over the other. So Uh, whatever we do will have to be consistent throughout.
That could be a reserve. If you think of an auction, like a reserve price.
Yeah.
Well, so This is more complex and meets the eye. Uh, there is a dollar amount which we're talking. But there's also considerations. This is just my opinion based on what eventually I think you guys are gonna decide. Um, so for example, somebody could come in and offers our full asking price. But then when they go to tell me what they're planning on developing there, uh, it could be a warehouse with one employee Versus somebody who comes and offers maybe five or ten percent less, but they're gonna have five hundred jobs. I think the council would be more inclined to take the lower price with the jobs. That's my opinion.
And this is, we did have this conversation.
So this is where I loop the mayor in on of the policy considerations. Um, but I don't want you thinking that this is strictly on the dollar amount being offered for the purchase of the But I'm also not the person that gets to make the decision about
It's overall financial impact.
And we have in the past, um, just display pack is one, we have offered tax Abatements based upon a number of jobs that were created. I mean, we, I think we have as a council considered Part of that is part of our policies of our of our of our job Is to help create Places that have jobs. So I mean, we, if we could turn the entire city into a giant warehouse, we wouldn't. Or, you know, a hundred bajillion dollars, like, that's not a thing. So that was part of the conversation. So I'm gonna take a straw poll. How do you feel about um, the manager and I continuing to try to Discuss this as we get offers and He will keep you in the loop with emails. I have to be careful about what I tell you in email. But
What is our bottom line that we owe on that grant?
So the bond is for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, there is gonna be some Um, taxes and fees related to that. I think the total payback's about five hundred, maybe five hundred and ten thousand. Uh, but obviously, the reason we decided to bond for this instead of take it out of our fund balances because we were working on the DNR grant and the Right Place Grant, which, one of which we did get. So I was fearful that at the time that if we were to pay for this out of our pocket, that we wouldn't have the funding for the other grants. So for the hundred and fifty thousand or so that we're gonna end up paying on the bond.
We had that money to be able to get these grants.
Three hundred thousand dollars for the grants.
Yeah, it was a wonderful grant.
Yeah. So um, we do owe, let's say about five hundred thousand.
But there isn't, like, we're not gonna be bankrupt if we don't quickly sell the property. That's not a
One of the things we worked out with our bond agents, who are excellent work, but Was we, you know, we split it up over a number of years and there's no penalty we paid that early. So even if we are not able to sell in the first year for some reason, you know, we'll have the money to float Into a second year, a third year. But obviously, we intend and anticipate that these land sales will occur quickly. But obviously, we intend and anticipate that these land sales will occur quickly. Obviously, in the first week, we've already received an offer.
And we haven't even done a ribbon cutting, so we've barely marketed it. So, your thoughts, Ms. Powell, do you want me to come back to you?
Uh, no, I support that, and I did, if anybody gets a chance to drive down there and see it, that development real nice.
One thing I would point out, I'm not going to give away numbers, but, uh, the difference between our asking price and the offer price that we rejected was a million dollars for the amount of land that we want. I felt that it was a bit much for the city to be giving up.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think that that's an appropriate policy, um, you know, even though we only owe five hundred thousand on it, it's our responsibility to attempt on behalf of the citizens to get fair market value, there's things this city wants. Um, and if we had that money, we could reinvest it into some of those other things that citizens have said, hey, this is important, but we just haven't had the cash.
I agree.
You're good, alright, so, you feel good?
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to communications, the community event calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't.
Anybody got anything they?
I don't normally discuss these individuals.
No, just, is there anything, I mean, anybody has any questions or thoughts about?
Heard the pumpkin giveaway went swell again, um, the Green family, they do a lot, and City Impact, they do a lot for this community.
Carriage rides, did we, I know we had some questions about lighting, and did we come to any?
Well, I, uh.
So Marty?
Sent another email and had an on-phone discussion with the organizer for the event to make crystal clear to them that the city expects them to be highly visible. Um, one thing I thought about purchasing just for the city and maybe the DPW could use it would be, um, kind of a magnetic light that we could attach to.
Right, we talked about that.
So, um, you know, we'll make sure that we'll have some city affiliated person, uh, attend the event, make sure that they, um, carriages are well lit up. Sure that the library director will be getting the same thought from me, uh, regarding their train, although I think there is a cruise during the day. Less of a concern.
Yeah. Um, also, the spooktacular that we did this year, as we're talking about events, like for the whole calendar, was spooktacular, it was wonderful, and I heard from people outside of our community about how wonderful they thought this was, and Sergeant Probst, I think, said that it was really, uh, excellent to have it so contained in a way that was really safe. A lot of kids get hit by cars on Halloween, and I have, um, some ideas even of how to expand this possibly for next year, and make it so we would have it on Main Street, we might close Main Street off for a couple of hours, extend it over to a, people who want to do a trunk or treat, maybe over to the, um, edge of the White Pine Trail where the staging areas, I had several neighbors who said, gosh, we didn't have any kids in the neighborhood, and people, yeah, they were all downtown, so, um, I don't know. I have no specific thing, but I think it's a really wonderful event that we are helping to sponsor with the city, and I would ask you to think about how we might, um, expand, structure, organize it for next year to, it's, it's a big safety piece for me, while also creating this wonderful event that was, it was really, it was quite fabulous.
It gets better every year.
The, the weather was very cooperative this year.
It was.
Versus some years, and you won't get many kids out for very long, so it was very cooperative, uh, we had more kids this year than we've had in several years. Well, uh, it was just a good night for families to be out walking.
So, to sum up what the mayor said, um, one of the things we talked about was closing Main Street. Because, you know.
This year it was sort of closed because we had the bridge out.
Because a lot of traffic was here, um, not going to be that case next year, um, Madam Mayor and I cut the ribbon the other day, and it was so busy, we didn't feel comfortable closing the road.
Yeah, we didn't, we cut the ribbon on the side.
But in, in addition to the, uh, potential of closing the road, um, the trunk or treat, where we would invite citizens and outside groups to just line their cars up on Main Street to pass out candy. Um, the idea at least is if Main Street is taking all the kids away from neighborhoods, maybe you, you know, as a parent who just likes seeing kids in their outfits, you get set up with your car right there on Main Street, pass out candy that way.
Be very fun.
Right, and we'd set it up for a couple hours, and then we could have like basically a pass, right, and we'd close it off to keep it safe.
That sounds like a lot of fun to me.
Right?
Because at, at this point, I put out full-size candy bars and full cans of pop, because I don't get like any kids, because they're all downtown.
Right.
So.
Or in my development.
Yeah, that might be there.
Gives out full-size candy bars, and the mayor has a direct line to the, the Santa Claus, and I didn't know this.
I mean.
I don't know what to tell you. Who could even be?
And my policy is anyone who shows up in costume gets candy bars.
Well, and I had said in the past, the library had had, uh, I don't know if it was, I want to say it was like the FFA, or I'm not sure, someone put up a haunted house in a community room that was like two dollars to go through, I remember my son thought it was great fun.
Oh, yes.
And, um, you know, we have this whole beautiful park that, I mean, people could utilize to do things.
We could brainstorm on that.
Yeah.
I think that expanding into like a haunted house in the park is a bit much for.
Well, no, I was thinking more if like people want a trunk or treat kind of thing.
Yeah.
Like if we don't have space in other places, like lining up along the edge of the park.
It sounds like it could be a lot of fun.
And it would be a nice way to make it safe, and.
Yeah.
I had said we could even come up with some kind of a theme or, you know.
Yeah.
And we could have some prizes for costume con- and I think was it the manager's idea a few years ago to do the decorated pots by the businesses?
DDA, yeah.
That was quite fabulous, and I thought I, I might bring this up at the DDA, but I just think it's a really wonderful community event that promotes safety and has a.
It's a good time and everybody's safe and.
Yeah. So just roll it around in your brains and think about how this might be.
And I'll segue, since we're talking about events, um, nine D, the Cedar Blitz twenty twenty-two report.
Mm-hmm.
I think you guys should be advised that this event's going to be keeping growing, this is already a fairly decently sized event.
Sure.
And this year, I believe they're going to be wrapped into another gravel bike race series, which could double the number of people involved in this race, so that's going to be another one of our main events, I think, here in the county. Our main issue right now is trying to determine what date it's going to be, was, I believe, a May race, but due to conflicts, it might be July or like June.
I mean, if you haven't read the report that they submitted, that was a super report as far as the return of information to us, that's the whole, and, uh, I, I commend them on that, because we have a full idea of, of the scope and how it worked out for them, so.
Also, um, I believe it was August, maybe it was August, it seems like it was around four H spare time. Um, there was a bike race out near Ionia Lowell where a biker was struck and killed, um, so I think that as this grows, we'll, we'll need to be willing to invest in some police presence to make sure that everyone is safe.
The good news, bad news is we're already doing that.
Excellent.
Um, however, it's very difficult to get officers for events like this.
Ah.
So we had, we had a lot of officers, but we also have a lot of points that we need to cover. So this is something that Sergeant Probst and I have met, you know, with the organizers multiple times, it just, it's difficult.
Is it something that we could do, like the way the Red Flannel Festival has their people, um, do their, because I do their five K with my son every year, and they have, um, obviously, they have police, but they also have like Red Flannel Festival people that work at a lot of those points to be like crossing guards.
So there obviously are volunteers, um, but, you know, for example, if you're coming up on a four-way stop or something, the bicyclist doesn't want to stop.
Sure.
So having a volunteer that can kind of keep an eye on traffic and say, go on through or not, but only officers can stop. But we do have a number, I mean, we're talking about fifty and a hundred mile long races.
Right.
Uh, but there's a significant number of intersections where you can't legally have a volunteer stop traffic.
Sure.
Um, so to make sure that they're safe and so that, you know, these bicyclists can continue through, we need a sworn officer.
Right.
Just not that many to go around.
Yeah.
But we are doing everything we can, now, i- it is common, because of course I've, I've raced bikes myself in the past, uh, that on some of these longer races, they're simply told it's open to, you know, motorists, you have to follow the law, um, because there's no other way to keep some of these things safe.
Sure.
So not to place, you know, uh, victim blaming on the bicyclist, um, but, you know, you just can't have a police officer.
Sure. Any other comments on community events, I see the pumpkin giveaway, do we have a date for the next Red Flannel Festival yet, I know that they like kind of take a hiatus.
First Saturday in October.
So, thank you. Because I see that's not on here, so. Any other questions, comments, discussion on any of the community events?
I, I just want to say, when we created the event form, I, I think it was a very good move on our part, so that people knew what to do and where to do it and how to do it, and it has, uh, I think, solved a lot of issues.
Yeah, well, and I love this, like, we have the pumpkin giveaway for October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. We, I mean, they have the, that'll be, we know next year, right?
Well.
You hope.
So we don't always know when they're going to hold their events.
Right.
Um, you know, regular contact with these people, um, so we generally have a good idea, and we generally know two or three months of events.
That's what I was going to say, we're getting them so that.
And I feel that this is one of those issues that, uh, the city manager had solved for us in his tenure, that we had a, a community event application, and then we had some ordinances, and none of it really fit very well together.
Didn't talk nicely.
It did not, so, um, that's one of those things that he really smoothed out for us and, and made all the pieces fit.
And then the clerk, I think it's the clerk that has gotten all of it so that it goes up on our website, which is, I think, very helpful. And as we, and Ms. Powell and I, a long, long time ago, went to see how Rockford did this, and they had this overarching, year-long list of events that they would put up on their website, and I think it was, you know, the fact that we can talk about a possibility of a spooktacular in November of twenty twenty-two about October of twenty twenty-three, I think that's helpful.
Yes, so, got together and had a meeting and because they have like, how many?
Something like thirty, forty, I don't know a lot.
Has full-time and paid staff to do it.
Right, right, I, but just even just having it as web space with a list and a form, which is one of the things we asked you to do, to say to people, you want to have a community event? Come fill it out, and then we'll say hello, and we'll put it on our agenda and put it on our.
Water, do you need porta potties?
So one thing I would, would also like to point out is nine G, the funds returned to fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
This is one of those things that I don't think council was getting the full picture of six years ago. Uh, so it's something I've asked the, uh, finance director to put together every year for you so that you know exactly how well we're doing. There's some communities that spend all their money and go and spend more fund balance every year. Um, that's not us, we've been doing very well, and I believe we've put a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars back into our general fund balance.
Which is how we're able to apply for these grants.
Fall back on emergency.
Sure. So, community event calendar, calendar, um, MERS, any of those questions on that, we talked about Cedar Blitz, the, um, pumpkin giveaway, I was not at the pumpkin giveaway, anybody? The bridge, hooray, hooray, I was out there Sunday, standing in front of traffic with the people from Fishback while they were trying to get the lines painted, and we had to move the barriers to move the paint truck in, which somehow made people think that they could just drive across the wet paint, so I may have went and stood in front of some traffic, which the person from Fishback thought was kind of entertaining, and I may have said to one person in truck, no, you may not drive across it, this is why we can't have nice things, which the gentleman from Fishback found highly entertaining, but, um, so that was sort of Sunday, but it's beautiful, it is, and it's a ninety-year bridge.
The last bridge was ninety years, we're hoping this one will go at least twice that.
I'd be okay with even just nine.
I won't be here to worry about it.
Either.
It'll be some other council's problem.
Right.
The sidewalks on it are wonderful and highly accessible in a way the previous ones were not, and there's parking, and the lines are all painted, and it just looks spectacular.
We've done an excellent job, and we're going to do a better job with sidewalk improvement in this community. Um, it's one of the things that I'm proud of is how walkable our community is and is becoming. That bridge, um, those sidewalks are nice and big and wide.
They are. And there was really kind of a pinch point, there was no really good way to get across that.
It was creating a separation between the north end and the south end of town, but I think that's reduced.
So we saw, while the manager and I were out there right after the ribbon cutting, we saw people riding their bikes and walking, walking their dogs. So, yeah, any thoughts on the bridge, anybody dripping across it, or?
Very nice bridge, it's the nicest part of the industry.
Right?
Till next year.
Yeah, till next year. Uh, then let's see, we talked about funds returned to fund balance, North Main quitclaim reservation on the drain easement, anything? Anybody needs on that, final affidavit of law, non-conforming property, we have that um, set electronically, fileable affidavit, and no other questions, we'll move on to department reports, Mr. Manager.
Um, yeah, we mostly talked about everything I did this month, um, you know, it was a busy month, um, this has kind of been a culminating year of a number of big projects. So after having completed those, um, you know, I feel pretty good about what we've accomplished this year. Um, another month or two left in the year, we'll get a whole bunch more done, and then we'll start planning for next year's projects, which we've been working on already. Um, yeah, so it's my report.
DPW, Mr. Lou Rose?
I don't have anything unless there's any questions.
You did a great job with the bridge.
Thank you.
And please pass along our thanks to the folks from MDOT and from Fishback.
Will do.
Mr. Moon, I think was his name, that was out there on a Sunday helping get the.
Yeah, Jared, yep.
He was wonderful to work with.
Yep, did a great job.
And, let's see, Police Department, Sergeant Probst, he's got anything for us? Sergeant Probst did a wonderful job on Halloween and keeping everybody safe. Alright, moving on to Fire Department, Marty, you have anything for us?
I, I do not, if there's anything the council has questions about, I can surely answer, um, we had a busy month, and it looks like we're going to set some kind of record for this year.
That's not a good record.
I really appreciated having the trucks out to open up the bridge on Monday.
You're welcome, thank you for the invite.
Almost Friday.
And Mr. Fraser, I know this is a little out of line, but don't forget we have a meeting tomorrow at nine AM at the Cloud Cannabis.
Yes, sir, I have that on my schedule.
I have a question, are there, are they going to keep the stop signs up on time or on fifth?
Yes, so I asked the DPW to permanently install those.
Excellent, yes.
And, um, just so the council's aware, uh, Fire Department does now have two, uh, extra vehicles that we're planning on getting rid of. I didn't know if council wanted, um, to have approval of that, or if council. I didn't know if council wanted to have approval of that or if council is comfortable with me just staff, I guess, taking care of that issue. Not anticipating a large dollar.
I am comfortable with you in conjunction with the Fire Department figuring out what that should look like.
Dispose of it as appropriate.
Is it supposed to be on auction or just?
Well, I mean, I think we'd be willing to take any dollar amount, I guess, to be fair, because we're a public body.
Right.
So normally.
We can, like,
Donate it to another public.
To another public body or give it at a lower price to another public body that needs it. We've, we've done that with other equipment in the past.
But it's difficult to do something like that for various reasons, which I'm not going to get into. So I anticipate they'll both go up for auction.
Dispose of that's put for you.
Any other questions on that? Then nothing else for the Fire Department. Moving on to Madam Clerk. You have lots.
Just a little bit. I just wanted to give you guys some turnout information. We had a really great turnout for our election. It was forty-five percent turnout.
There was a line.
There was a line.
Comparably, two thousand eighteen was a forty-seven percent turnout, so just slightly lower than that. However, presidential turnouts for twenty twenty was at sixty-one percent and twenty sixteen was at fifty-five percent. We did see a higher number of in-person voting this election in comparison. Just as an example, in twenty twenty, the presidential election, we had eight hundred and eighty-four in-person voters and on Tuesday, we had eight hundred and thirty-six. With that being said, I gave you guys all a really great article from the Democracy Fund that was written November second of twenty twenty-two. It does a really good job of breaking down a lot of the changes that have been happening in election. Specifically, one of one, one of the things that really just caught my attention is the relation to smaller jurisdictions and the actual workload that is put onto those jurisdictions. They specifically note that communities with five hundred, five thousand voters or less have seen a disproportionately high increase caused by those changes. And as you guys know, with the proposal that passed this last week, we will also see many challenges that we will face in this community implement that.
Yes.
We will work hard and diligently to make it happen, but it will come with many challenges.
I'm assuming we will need to hire a lot more election worker. I mean, there's a eight-day window now that people can, nine-day window that people can show up to vote. An additional eight-day window, I guess, is what I was thinking when I looked at it.
I think the short answer is we don't quite know what the impact is going to be yet.
Yeah, I'm assuming you'll have to come up, you'll have to come up with the whole structure for what that's going to look like.
We don't know what that looks like quite yet, but like I said, it will come with its challenge.
Yeah, but you know, yay voting. Yay for people voting. So, hooray.
I have to say, I've worked the elections now for a couple of years and there's no, no, in my opinion, no finer clerk and election group than we have here in Cedar.
Oh, I agree.
Rebecca does a wonderful job.
And the clerk, you know, we've, we've talked about this, I think, as a council and I've talked to the city manager about this. The job of clerk thirty years ago is very different than the job of clerk now. I mean, it's just a much more detailed, much more multi-staffed, much more
Complicated.
Complicated. Just, it's just a bigger job. And that's without even taking into consideration the, what I call the shouty spitty people who feel some kind of way about certain kind of things. So, yeah, I greatly appreciate our clerk's level of expertise and training that she has sought out that has been beyond what is required to really take us to that level of service for voting. Because at the end of the day, that is one of our absolute most critical responsibilities as the council is to ensure that people get to vote.
Yes.
And thank you for that. Okay, any other thoughts on the election or the clerk or anything you would like to say? Finance Director Treasure, we've seen our wonderful audit. Anything additional, Darla?
I have nothing unless there's questions.
Any questions? Code Enforcement?
She's got probably the hardest job in the community and she does it well every.
She does.
Years of mental health experience.
Yes, right, right. Perfect person, yes. Building, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, shall we take a ten-minute recess before we go into closed session to discuss an employee review?
We can. I just, nothing else on boards and commission minutes, like library board or the N K C E or, everybody good? Okay, then we will move on. We will take a ten-minute recession? Yes? Go potty?
Is that?
Back into session at eight twenty-seven. And with that, I will entertain a motion. Are we good? I will entertain a motion to, for, to take the request of the city manager to go into closed session to discuss his evaluation, which is one of the allowable reasons to go into closed session.
I would make that motion.
For any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. We will go into closed session in a minute.